Get your mic.
Alrighty, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Vaughn Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kib Watten.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Peruggi. Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Corum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to excuse Councilman Peruggi.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Uh, first thing we have here is the minute approval of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Alright, first things first here. We have a proclamation to give out here to wish a very happy one-hundredth birthday to Ms. Helen Kirk. Uh, if we could get a motion to make this part of the regular reading here. Alright, the star of the show now here.
Yep, yep.
So I won't make you get up, don't worry, but I know that, uh...
Well, she can get up.
The left is like to. So I would like to read a proclamation for everyone at home here that we have for Ms. Helen Kirk. Uh, whereas Helen M. Kirk was born in Detroit, Michigan on August eighth, nineteen twenty-four. Whereas Helen moved into a brand-new home on Foxford with her husband Richard in March of nineteen fifty-six before any sidewalks in town existed. They raised four children in this home where she has continued to live for the past sixty-eight years. Whereas Helen has been a member of Saint Thomas Episcopal Church for sixty-five years. She's been very active in the Trenton Quilters and an avid supporter of the City of Trenton and, of course, the Detroit Tigers. Now therefore, I, Stephen Rezepa, as mayor of the City of Trenton, do hereby proclaim August eighth, twenty twenty-four as Helen M. Kirk Day in the City of Trenton and wish the most hearty, happy one-hundredth birthday from all of our citizenry. So, Ms. Kirk.
That's great.
Okay, is there anything you want to say to the crowd here? Any tips you have for us?
The only thing I can say is I love you all.
Wow, that's great. Um, Stephen, can my family go up and say a few words? Take the, give Paula the microphone. Don't leave. Don't leave.
We got a, some very special thing that we'd like to do. Do you want to introduce yourself?
This is just the second.
I'm Helen's oldest. Um, back in March, when my folks, in March of nineteen fifty-six, my mom was pregnant with Jonathan, raise your hand.
I can tell you're the oldest.
Um, the Detroit News is tweeting a series of articles about do-it-yourself things. And they did a do-it-yourself move. So my mom and dad, being scrifty, having bought a new house for fourteen thousand dollars. Um, or fourteen hundred dollars.
Fourteen hundred, yeah.
Um, moved into this house, walking over plywood to get moved in. So the Detroit News came and did a whole series on us. It was in the editorial section of March of fifty-six. Somebody give to you for your records. And it shows the pictures of all of us moving in the house with a little narrative.
Oh, very cool.
And to show you how long ago that was.
Feel a little Timmy in there.
That's me. So the whole article was just about moving into that house. Well, the interesting thing is that mom has had the same neighbor, Betty Longton, who has lived next door for sixty-eight years. She turned ninety-seven.
Oh, that's great.
So that's a pretty good neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Oh. YouTube Barb, stop in the shop. I know Pam does her, and this is Linda. I know, I'm rabble. I know, it's so good for you guys to come down. It's very good to see you. Yes.
I gave you the late items when I came in, right here. So, remember that, with the agenda sheet and video?
Yeah, I got the agenda sheet, but I didn't look at the list.
So Jill, so there's two items from Jill. And there was the court, too.
Okay, I get to see that. So now, so, okay, should I do them separate then?
Yeah, because the thirty-third district court is on the agenda.
See, I can't see too well because I got shot in my eye.
I just want to know if someone can have access.
Right now, so. Rick wrote it out for me, the number.
Alrighty, very cool. So.
That's okay.
I'll give it to you online. I don't know what you're doing on it.
I don't, I didn't do anything with it.
Alrighty, so the next item we have here on the agenda, uh, public comment regarding items on today's agenda. Uh, if anyone is wishing to speak on any of the agenda items for this evening, that would be the time or the... There we are, okay. There we go. Um, any, if, this is where we'd invite the public to speak on any items regarding, uh, today's agenda items. If there are any other, uh, there'll be another opportunity for all other public comment, uh, later on in the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, we'd ask if you begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. And we'll go to any folks in person first, then the Zoom, but not seeing any on Zoom. Alright, moving right along here. Uh, next item we have here, uh, two appointments. I'm asking for this body's approval of my reappointments of Mona Whitaker to the City Beautiful Commission and Mark Caldwell of the Planning Commission uh, for terms expiring August first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kib Watten.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Abstained.
Vaughn Crooks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all. Uh, next we have here, uh, under authorities, commissions, boards, and committees, um, from Mr. Richard Essenmacher, his resignation from the Traffic Safety Commission. Um, asking this body to receive and place this on file and then request that we send him a letter of appreciation for his services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Alright, we'll go now to, uh, under general, we have Thirty-third District Court. First thing here for the, uh, is the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and I will defer to our court delegate, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn Crooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the annual financial report for December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Yes, do you want me to do the late item now?
Um, we'll do that one later on, just to keep it in order.
Alright.
Cool, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, seeing none unanimously so ordered there. Uh, next up we have, uh, from the Michigan Municipal League, the voting delegate requesting a motion to designate myself as the representative and Councilman Benedetti as the alternate as voting delegates for the annual meeting of the Michigan Municipal League, um, to be held September eleventh to the thirteenth. Um, if we plan on attending, and for the record, I know I won't be able to attend, so Councilman Benedetti, if you are able to, feel free, and we can let you know. Uh, so we get a motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Alright, uh, Madam Clerk, I'll have you take these next two here. First up, we have from, uh, the Birchwood residents, a block party request.
Thank you. The Birchwood residents are requesting to have a block party on Saturday, August tenth, from three P. A., three PM to ten PM. And they're looking to have the road closed on Birchwood Street from Grow Street to Emeline Street. This would be under the direction of the Police Department and, um, DPS Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, uh, for approval here. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. And the next item, um, I actually would like to pull from the agenda. I received a phone call today from Mr. Gillison, and they are canceling this event.
Okay, if we could get a motion to remove the item from the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Madam Clerk. Alright, we will, uh, go to our department heads and officials now. First up, we have from our city administrator, the Civic Plus website renewal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you have the Civic Plus annual invoice for hosting our website. And the, it includes the annual fee and all the things noted on the, uh, item description in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixteen cents, and it would come from account one oh one, two two nine, nine three four, point zero zero two.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. Uh, next up, from our attorney, Mr. Ackerman, we have Ordnance eight one nine, Stormwater Management, second reading.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. The stormwater management is in compliance with the state request. And here we are, uh, repealing portions and readopting the articles to have a proper, uh, acted upon stormwater management. We ask for the second reading and approval. Thank you.
I would still move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Ellen. Alright, from our controller, Ms. Cooper, uh, we have the BSNA Software Annual Service Renewal.
Yep, good evening. Um, so before you is the annual invoice for our BSNA software, um, service and support fee. Um, so per the agreement, there is, uh, an annual increase just based on the CPI. So just looking to, um, approve the payment for BSNA software annual service and support in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Uh, next up, from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, uh, we have request payment authorization for an emergency water main replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. In July, the DPW experienced three water main breaks on Rutledge during a seven-day period. This particular water main is located in the road, requiring removal of concrete each time it broke. This hundred-foot stretch of water main was installed in nineteen forty-seven and showed significant signs of deterioration. These water main breaks affected not only residents on that block, but also put a couple of businesses out of water during repairs. Due to the condition of the water main and the amount of road surface that was removed, it was decided to make an emergency water main replacement. Campo Brothers Excavating was used to replace a hundred-foot of water main along with four service connections. Therefore, I'm seeking authorization to pay Campo Brothers Excavating emergency repair invoice in the total amount of ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Funds are available in the water main replacement account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing, oh, Councilman Kib Watten.
Ju- just a quick, uh, question, Kevin. Um, what kind of main did you put back in? What was the replacement main?
It was, uh, C nine hundred PVC.
Okay, alright, I was just wondering if we went to that already.
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Cool, thank you, Councilman. Seeing none, uh, unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have from our DDA Director, Ms. Pusino, uh, replacements for the downtown trash receptacles across, uh, along West Jefferson Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Today I have for you the replacements of the downtown trash receptacles along West Jefferson Avenue. We have twenty-four trash receptacles that are along West, West Jefferson, West Jefferson Avenue that need to be replaced. Uh, they're in disrepair, rusted, the rain bonnets are missing, so they are flooding with water, causing it very difficult for the DPW to remove the waste. I attained three different quotes. The lowest quote was the Park Warehouse for twenty-three units with flare tops. They'll have the side doors like the ones we have now, and the rain bonnets to prevent them from filling up with water. Um, we'll also be purchasing plastic liners that are better than the metal liners still have. The total for the quote is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four and fifty-five cents. We did already purchase a sample trash receptacle that the DPW did check, and it's up to standards. Uh, the DDA approved the expenditure for the trash receptacles on June thirteenth. It'll be on the DDA maintenance account, two four eight, seven oh four, nine three one. I ask you guys to hopefully move and approve the quote from Park Warehouse for the nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four and fifty-five cents.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any, Councilwoman Vaughn Crooks?
Yeah, just a question, general question, not for Ms. Pusino, but, um, have we looked at the ones on West Road also?
Yeah, Dean, I think this, but, yes, in short, yeah, oh, Dean.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. So what, uh, what DPW is going to do is take, we're actually going to add, after we refurbish the ones from downtown, add and move those, the good, the good ones that are still on, more on the outside downtown, and they'll go up on West Road. And then, as, as you know, when we talked about, uh, the non-DDA streetscape, that will, there will be a permanent, um, uh, better solution for that, uh, going forward. But we feel pretty comfortable that we can replace and refurb those, uh, ones, some of those, to go up on the other side of West Road.
Yeah, because some of the ones on West Road are terrible.
Yep.
They're bad, so if they're not good enough for downtown, I hope they're good enough for West Road.
Well, there, there's, there's a lot less of a need as far as, uh, um, what's on the west, on west of Fort Street as compared to the downtown area, so it, there's not as many quantity-wise needs on that side.
I know that, I know, because we end up with them falling over. I mean, I don't know if we have enough of them on West Road because at this point, before they're empty.
We plan to add, we, we should be able to add, in- increase the number. I forget the number that we have over there. Huh? There's only about five now.
Five on West Road?
On your area, West Road, that you're talking about.
Right, because, yeah, because, because mine is always filled up and overflowing, and it's rusted, and it's pretty bad in front of my shop, so.
Yep.
I don't know what the others all look like, but I just think we need to upgrade.
We'll be able to improve that, and like I said, uh, that's part of the long-term streetscape, um, project or something we would have to look at in the next budget otherwise.
Yeah, because, I mean, everything's so beautiful in town with all the flowers and everywhere on West Road, Jefferson. Kudos to everybody who did that because it's beautiful, so it'd be nice to have some new trash cans and things that make all of it look better.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, cool, thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered, thank you, Angelia.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have, uh, two items from our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Beaker. Uh, first one here, uh, the Elm Street Parking Lot Improvements, which we had tabled for July fifteenth meeting. So, uh, yeah, if we could, uh, move to remove it from the table first.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported to remove it from the table. Any further discussion unanimously removed from the table? Uh, Tim, take it away now.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the DDA has undertaken the renovation of the Elm and West Jefferson Parking Lot, and Beckett and Rader has overseen the project and design and the bidding process. Three bids were received and, uh, reviewed for completeness and project sustainability, uh, suitability, I'm sorry. Uh, Gibraltar Construction Company in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, JB Contracting in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Superior Landscape Companies, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-eight cents. After careful consideration of the bids in terms of project requirements, completeness, and references, Beckett and Rader recommended awarding the contract to JB Contracting Incorporated. Uh, their bid of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars aligns closely with the project, uh, budget and demonstrates the capability to deliver the required quality and scope of the work.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the Concession Hot Water Heater.
On July twenty-second, the concession stand, uh, in the Kennedy Recreation Center's hot water heater began to leak. The hundred-ga- hundred-gallon power vent, uh, water heater needed to be replaced. Uh, quickly searching for a replacement, we found that the tanks would be between ten thousand and fourteen thousand dollars apiece. Uh, we then reached out to Quint Plumbing, who was able to secure a replacement within three days and install it on July twenty-fourth, and to minimize any interruptions in the service. I'm requesting your approval for this emergency repair in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, which includes the cost of the new hundred-gallon power vent water heater, new piping, and all the associated labor.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Very much, Tim. Alright, now we've got, uh, two items here from our Deputy Police Chief, uh, Chief Neese. Uh, first up here being the, uh, purchase of thirteen in-car printers and docking stations.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just for some history here, late last year, the Downriver Community Conference Conference made us available or, uh, made us aware of a grant, um, a technology grant they were seeking, and asked us to compile some things that we may need to purchase under this grant. During the week of July twenty-second, we were advised that the grant was approved and that we could, um, submit our requests. The Trenton Police Department is in need of new in-car printers, uh, thirteen Brother printers. You'll see the attached quote in your packet. Uh, that is one of the purchases. These funds will be one hundred percent reimbursed through the grant. I am seeking your approval for the purchase of thirteen in-car printers and docking stations with all the cables for a total purchase amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents out of the DCC Burn Grant Account. Again, this will be one hundred percent reimbursed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Chief. And then next up, the purchase of Motorola handheld radio.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, under the DCC grant, uh, we did an inventory of our radios, and we currently have one spare police radio, handheld radio, and our inventory. and we currently have one spare police radio, handheld radio in our inventory. It sounds like it's not a big deal, but when we do have radios go down, we do not have spares to give out. So if we have more than one radio that needs to go in and be repaired, we have to make other accommodations. So also, under the grant, I'm requesting a purchase of one additional police radio through the Motorola MPSCS system, which is an approved my deal vendor. It comes with all accessories, charging stations, and programming through Herkema Radio, which is our radio vendor, in the total amount of five thousand five hundred and ninety three dollars and seventy five cents. And again, this is one hundred percent reimbursable through the DCC grant.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. And Councilwoman Cabo Watten?
Yeah, quick question. Does every officer, does every officer assign their own radio?
Yes, they are.
And so these would be in the event of?
Yes.
It's not just per shift, it's?
Each officer is assigned a radio for security purposes. Fortunately, we're in a position in the city to do that. So, for example, if they hit their emergency button, dispatch sees their name, and they immediately know whose radio, obviously that's assigned to. Same thing with key ups. Anytime we key up our radio, it shows in dispatch the officer's name or the vehicle that they're in, if it's a car radio.
Right.
So, and when we, when we make a swap for a spare, I call DCC and have them switch the name, so everybody knows who's got which radio, and there's no confusion.
Yeah.
So.
That's great.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I'm cool.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, we've got a couple of late communications this evening. First two here from our Human Resources Director, Ms. Perry, and the first being a letter of understanding between the City of Trenton and the Trenton Police Officers Association.
Yes, thank you. So this is a letter of understanding with, this one is for the Officers Association, which represents the police officers and sergeants in the police department. And this was part of the opener discussions last year with, in regards to the collective bargaining agreement. So these are the agreements as it relates to those openers. And key points include compensation for educational achievements and the management of comp time. So tonight, I'm seeking your approval of these, this agreement, and then authorization for your signature.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then next, we have a letter of understanding between the City of Trenton and the Trenton Inspectors and Lieutenants Association.
Thank you. So this is mirrored language similar to the last agreement. This too, a letter of understanding related to the opener for the collective bargaining agreement with TILA. And again, it includes educational achievement, compensation for that, as well as the management of comp time. So again, yeah, seeking your approval.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. All right, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Von Crooks here as our thirty third District Court delegate for our fines, costs, and fees for July of twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the cost and fines for the thirty third District Court in the amount of four thousand two hundred and one dollars and fifty five cents due to the City of Trenton.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? It's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes.
All right, I will now for our dispersments and statements and reports, defer to our Mayor Protime Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to make a motion to authorize dispersments for August seventh, twenty twenty four, in the amount of three million two hundred and seventy six thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and forty seven cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to place on file the following reports, the border review minutes, July twenty twenty four, fire and police pension board draft minutes, July tenth, twenty twenty four, and the retiree healthcare benefit plan board draft minutes, July tenth, twenty twenty four.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? It's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. All right, other council business, just briefly, well, somewhat briefly on my end, I do want to just let everyone know that next Thursday, August fifteenth at seven PM, Congresswoman Dingell is going to be hosting a town hall with some officials from the EPA to talk about various properties down river, not just in Trenton, but just broader environmental issues. And that'll take place at the Westfield Center. Again, that's next Thursday at seven PM at the Westfield Center. So should be some good information there. And then, as, you know, most folks watching know, we had an election yesterday and a really, really consequential bond passed. So I had, and that puts it lightly here. I had put this on my Facebook page, but wanted to share it with everyone else and really just broadly say to our residents, thank you. This is going to just be a massive undertaking. And, you know, Trenton residents made their voice heard and supported the most transformative bond proposal for our community and generations that is going to revamp our fire, police, and municipal buildings in a really transformational way here. The bond proposal is going to give our employees and residents a safe, secure, and modern places to work and do business, enhance the services and emergency response times that we are able to provide to our residents, and give the community buildings and spaces that we can all be proud to call our own. This was really an incredible effort that was literally years in the making. And I'd be remiss if I did not thank everyone here on council, all of our elected officials for their support in this initiative, along with certainly our city administrator, Dean Creach, our fire chief, Keith Anderson, our police chief, Mike Hawkins, and truly every single one of our department heads and their staffs, who put in such an incredible effort to making this a reality. But most importantly, we have to thank you, the residents, for your support, for our vision, our belief that a better Trenton is possible here. We have long been a community that supports one another, and the transformations from this bond proposal will last much longer than most of us, much long after most of us are gone. So again, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart to all of our residents who made this possible. While it's going to be some years before the fruits of this bond are fully actualized, I'm incredibly, incredibly proud to be your mayor, and I promise that we will continue making you all proud of the city that you chose to call home to. It's, now the fun part begins in the work of actually hashing out the architectural aspect of it, doing the land acquisition, all that good stuff. And we had Alan looking at properties and getting ideas already this afternoon here. So I, again, just want to thank everyone here on council. This was a team effort. All of our staff knows it, and I had said, used this quote in our staff meeting this morning, too, that I had heard recently, and that, you know, obviously, we were all elected here, and, you know, the last few results of these elections show that people are generally pretty happy with the direction that the community is headed in here. And the quote was that, you know, political capital, or winning elections is not about building political capital, but it's about expending political capital to do things that can help people's day-to-day lives. And I think that this is one of those things that perfectly defines that, and the legacy that we'll be able to leave behind for everyone's children, grandchildren, and all those that come after us, knowing that we're going to be a place that we can be proud of for a very long time. So thank you all very much for that. And certainly plenty more information to come over these coming months and years, too. But very excited to see what we're going to be able to do with this. So thank you for, again, to all of our residents for putting your faith in us and our leadership in these departments for making sure that these, these are going to be places that work for us for a while. So that's all I have for the evening. I said I was going to be brief, and I guess I wasn't very brief, but I was as close as I could do to being succinct about this. So it's been a very, very exciting twenty-four hours for us. So I'll go to the rest of the council now here. And tonight, we'll get started with Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Oh, fantastic. I would just like to say that I'm truly pleased with the results of the bond, and I want to thank all of our residents who voted. Regardless whether or not you voted for it, I know it was a very hard decision to make, but I will tell you that this is a generational investment, as Dean likes to say. And I'm extremely proud of the results, and I look forward to seeing what else we're able to do. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Von Crooks?
Yes, I think the mayor and Dora kind of summed it up for me. I was very proud, because I guess when you grow up here and you see all the changes over the years, and you just know that you love this community and you love what we do, and we want to do it the best, better than anybody down river. We want to be the best. So therefore, I'm thanking the residents wholeheartedly for voting for this bond. Another thing I'd like to bring up tonight is Mrs. Kirk was here, hundred years old. Our families go back a long way. In fact, her daughter Paula that spoke was one of my dad's first dental hygienist. And I mean, so our families go back a long way, and I was really proud to see Mrs. Kirk be able to walk down those stairs better than I can. You know, I thought, that's a big accomplishment there. So, yeah, it was really overwhelming to see the whole family come down for that. And they really, truly appreciated what we did for them tonight, honoring her. And another lady that can't be forgotten either in town is Mrs. Lenora Kirsten. She turned Sunday last, uh, Sunday, one hundred last Sunday, and although she's, you know, in a nursing facility right now, but long, longtime Trenton resident, her husband was Judge Kurt Kirsten, and her family raised their family here, too. So happy birthday and shout out to Lenora Kirsten also. So just these people, you know, you can't forget about them in town. So that's about all I have tonight, and I just thank the residents again. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback off what the mayor and the two council people to my left said, yes, we appreciate what the residents did for us yesterday, but also realize that they did it for us. They, like they said, they did it for us, they did it for the residents, they did it for the employees. Coming from the fire department and working here twenty-five years and two days, there were times those buildings you wondered if we would ever see anything improve in them. And I really appreciate the fact that, like you said, Dean, the department heads, everybody spent the time, they informed the residents. We had, I don't know, four or five meetings, plus we offered tours of both, both buildings. But unless you lived in them like we did for twenty-four hours at a time, I mean, I don't know if anybody really understands what an improvement this is going to be for the health and safety of the employees, the response time, the education of them, and even the technology advancements we can put in these new buildings. There is no way to do that in the old building. I mean, we used to have to go and undo the radiators so people could get heat downstairs where the fire trucks were kept. So this is a big step in the right direction to keep us moving forward. And I know, you know, there are people that said no, but realize this is investing in the future of your house to make our city still valuable for people to move here, which it still is. There's always, everybody looking for a house, and they can never find one. So it's a, it's a great investment on our part and the residents.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I just wanted to also say thank you to the voters for coming out yesterday. I was out there for a couple of hours in the pouring rain, and I was so excited to see how many people showed up to vote. So that was so encouraging, and to have the bond pass was, was awesome. And I also wanted to thank the Downtown Development Authority and City Beautiful for the flowers. My family and I took a walk from one side of Fort all the way downtown and around Elizabeth Park, and the flowers are gorgeous. Up and down West Road, up and down Jefferson, they've just done a really good job, and it just makes our city even more attractive. Not that it could really get any better, but it did this summer. So thank you to those two groups.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Cabo Watten?
Good to see you. Good, good to be seeing, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the public for, you know, supporting the bond. I couldn't say it any better than anybody else that's already said it, but it's, it's your, your support has been very much appreciated. This will do wonders for our community for years to come. That said, I've had a little bit of a vacation, not really, but I've been out of town for the last couple of months, and coming back to Trenton, coming back home to southeast Michigan. I can tell you, there's no place like home. Really did, we really did miss everybody. I can't thank this community enough for the support that you've given my wife, that you've given my family. She had a really serious surgery, and, and I have to, again, I'd be remiss if I did not say thank you to a gentleman that's never been here. His name is Dr. Tomoaki Kado out of New York City, and, and his staff. They were absolutely wonderful. And New York was a great place to be. They took great care of my wife and myself, but it's nice to be home. So for, thank you for all of you who called, sent the emails, texts, Facebook messages. But it's nice to be home, and it's nice to have our family back together. So.
Give our loved Melissa.
Sorry, a little, a little emotional.
All right.
But no, thank you.
Welcome back.
Yep, nice to be back.
Happy to have you back, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman. It was all great. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
I'd like to thank all of our election workers for doing a great job working the election yesterday. I can't say enough how much I appreciate and love our election workers. I have such a great team, and they do such a wonderful job, and I'm so thankful to have them. We have one more election to go this year, and it's a doozy, the presidential. So we're, we're very anxious for Thanksgiving to get here, and we'll be very thankful. And then I'd also like to mention the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, August nineteenth. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Assessor, do you have anything?
Nothing to report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
It's going to be exciting.
Thank you. It's, it's good to be here, especially after a vote like we had last night. And yesterday was exciting. A couple of things. The tax bills have gone out. If you haven't, and I hate to state the obvious, but if you haven't got a tax bill for your property taxes, please let us know. Give us a call at the office, and we'll, we'll get one out to you. The due date is September third. It's a Tuesday, so that's extended because of the way Labor Day and the weekend falls. The other thing is, I just, I just want to say thanks to the Fire and Police Department for their support for the ice cream sundaes that we've had for the last three Sundays, from one to three o'clock. And they've done just a great job. And, and while it's important to pass the millage for a lot of the departments and so forth, the improvement around the facilities around town, and the fire and police stations, it's just a great reminder, if you were out to this, by the way, it was free ice cream. And I was, I went there like three times, isn't that right? But anyway, the fire department, the police department, thank you so very, very much for your support in making this significant. And it wasn't a huge lift, I don't think, for anybody, but they were there, they showed up, we were, Rotary was there. And so on behalf of Rotary, and beyond behalf of the residents of the city, the fire and the police and the people that work here, it's more than just buildings and fire trucks and police vehicles, and even a five thousand dollar radio. It's, it's about the people, and so we thank you. And I thank the people for voting and making the right decision. At least, usually, they get it right, given enough time. Anyways, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McCullough? Right. We'll go to our department heads. Any of our department heads have anything for us this evening? All right, move right on along then, go into public comment here. Ask anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address, and direct all questions through me. I'd ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll go to any folks here in person first, and then those on the Zoom. If anyone on the Zoom wishes to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and we can get you queued up from there. So.
Hello, my name is Linda Libby, and I'm a resident of Trenton here. As you can see, my friend here is passing out pictures that I would like for all of you to see. And the reason why I'm here, and I'm so glad that you said Ms. Dingell was going to be here for the EPA, because I will have to see her, because I'm here because of the memorials that are around Trenton.
Thank you.
That have been there for years. And they're, they don't look very nice. They're not taken care of. And it is part of the fact that the rain, the snow, and everything else is, you know, the plastic and that. And I don't think that we, the city, has any thing to say about it. I've called Wayne County, you know, regarding these, as to who is to take care of or do something with these, and they said it wasn't them. So they said, call your police department, which I did. And that man said, I forget his name, but he says, you need to go to a city council meeting. So that's why I'm here. I think something needs to be done. The, where these are, I went over here on Fort Street and in front of the storage thing. The man said, I know it looks terrible. Nobody takes care of it. I would think that we could have some kind of, like, if you're going to do a memorial, why don't we put a thing on it, like, for a month? And then after that, the city gives them a white cross that they could put there, rather than the mess that's out there. And then after that, the city gives them a white cross that they could put there, rather than the mess that's out there. And I just, I don't know if you vote on this and say, well, we can do it or whatever, but it, it really is. It doesn't look very good for the city, and, you know, the cemeteries wouldn't let this go on in there. And it's, you don't let me put my trash out there, and I'm not trying to be nasty about it. I just think we, as a town, and the way it looks, should do something positive. Let them put a memorial out there for maybe a month. And do they come to the city and say, can I do it, or is it just there? Nobody knows. That's just it. Nobody knows how this goes on. Do you get, do you come to the city? Do you go to Parks and Recreation and say, can I put these balloons out there? Can I put all these stuffed animals out there? No one knows. So I think we, you, need to do something and clean up the memorials and put a cross out there for these people, you know?
Yeah, so just to, I suppose, answer some of your questions a little bit. Yeah, no, they don't come to the city for permission or anything. Most folks just put something up for varying circumstances. And so a couple of those I've noticed before, but some others I actually don't think I have. But you're right, some of them, I mean, just the nature of the weather and storms and wintertime and things like that, that they don't necessarily look the best. So it'll honestly probably have to be addressed almost on an individual instance because it looks like some might almost be on private property, where others are on sort of right-of-ways and things like that. But we'll definitely make sure, because some of those streets might be ones that our employees cut others. It probably is Wayne County that actually tends to them, but we'll make sure that the right folks are aware on, on that. I don't know that we'll necessarily be setting time limits on those, but just given how sensitive that can be. But as a whole, yeah, we'll definitely do what we can to see, make sure things at least look spruced up to the best of their ability in some of those public facing situations.
I don't even think people here know who they belong to.
A lot of times, yeah, right. It might be one person that tends to it every year or something like that, too. Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, so something just needs to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I don't want to make any promises to you right now or say that I've got some set plan to fix it, but we'll make sure that we can do what we can to try and at least get it spruced up.
I'm always available to help to fix anything, so.
We always like the volunteers like that. So thank you very much for bringing it to us, too. We really appreciate it. And want to make sure, okay, you got the photos and phone down there, too. So thank you very much for coming.
Get to watch all the senior citizens hobble up the steps. My name's Barbara Galloway. I live in Trenton on Harrison. So I know it's early, the bond just passed, and research is being done. Are there any properties that you can share? People are very curious to have an idea. And, you know, rumors are rampant on where things might be or could be. Are there any locations that are seriously being looked at that could be shared?
So at this point, and nudge me if I'm going too far on this, but at this point, no. That there really, there's, I know that everyone has ideas or think that there's some grand plan, but we have not engaged in any formal conversations with property owners about that. We know that it makes the most sense response time-wise to have it in the broader Fort and West Road area. And that is something that over the next several weeks and months, that we will be able to have some of those conversations. But at this point, no, that there hasn't been any sort of, I don't want to make it sound facetious, like secret plan or anything like that, but no.
I didn't think it was secret. I just thought maybe there were, you know, like I say, lots of people have ideas on where they think it's going to be. And so, all right, well, we'll wait till here.
Absolutely. And hopefully, in the coming months, we'll have more, more concrete information to give folks, too.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. Thank you. All righty. Anyone else for public comment? We'll see if we have anyone on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Support.
Moved and supported for adjournment, seven forty-eight PM. Thank you all, and see you all in a week and a half, on the sixteenth, or not sixteenth, it's nineteenth.